Hi, Charlene.
All right, I'd like to call the October 2nd, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting to Order. Would everyone please stand with me for the Pledge of Legions?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would staff please call the roll?
Commissioners Smithwick, Ailey, and Anderson have excused absences. Commissioner Toptest?
Here.
Commissioner Turner?
Here.
Commissioner Burton?
Here.
Commissioner Murray?
Here.
Chair Badla?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? All right, any objections to approving the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. And for our last meeting on September 4th, are there any changes to the minutes? Any objections to approving the minutes? All right, hearing none, the minutes for our September 4th meeting are approved. Moving on to public hearings, we have Resolution PG 2024-013 granting a variance to the side yard setback in building height for an accessory structure at 370 Endicott Drive. May I have a motion to approve? And I'll just remind the commissioners that all you have to do is say, I move to approve the short version. You don't have to say the long version. I think we had, I thought we did, but we don't. So anyways, may I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Murray, I've moved to approve Resolution Number PG 2024-013.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thanks. All right, may we have the staff report?
On August 27th, Ryan Butler, the owner of 370 Endicott Drive, applied for a variance to the zoning standards for both height and for the setback. He wishes to construct an accessory structure, and this will be a garage with a mother-in-law apartment. The garage will serve for boat storage, and I'm really sorry about the font. This computer obviously does not have our city font, so it changed it automatically. The request has two parts. One is to build within the 10-foot side yard setback. Mr. Butler requests to encroach five foot into the setback and builds five foot from the property line. The rationality of this request is due to restrictions on the lot of buildable space. To the east is the Kenai River, and on this top photograph, you can see that there's a sharp bluff line, and that is where the Kenai River is just beyond that. Approximately 45% of the lot has very steep topography due to the bank of the Kenai River, and it has encumbrances such as the 100-foot Kenai River overlay district, as well as the 50-foot Anatomus Waters Habitat Protection. Additionally, the property's well is located to the southeast of the home, so about where that pink arrow is. As well as the septic is in the front yard to the west, and a replacement site for the septic is slated to be installed this fall in the same area approximately. By extending the garage an additional five feet towards the side lot line, this allows for a total of 14 feet between the home and the garage, which allows for a greater distance of, from the well, as well as maneuvering for snow removal and storage. The second part of the request, Mr. Butler requests to be granted to exceed the maximum building height requirement of an accessory structure by two feet for a total of 26 feet in height. Soldatna Municipal Code requires accessory structures like detached garages to be 24 feet in height at maximum. By allowing the additional two feet, this allows for the intended use of boat storage within the garage. The proposed garage would have 16-foot garage doors, the size needed for adequate clearance of his boat, and also would require 18-foot tall side walls. In order to have a roof pitch of three, which is Building Code standard for composites, shingles, or metal roofs, the minimum height of the garage would need to be 24.5 feet, which would still require a variance. Most roofs in Soldatna have a pitch of five or greater. The applicant requests a 26-foot tall building to accommodate a pitch greater than three, which would help with snowshed. Again, I'm so sorry about this font.
You know, it shows like, why did it choose that?
I don't know. It's like a computer. The Rural Residential Zoning District is intended to provide for a stable, quiet, low-density residential development and other uses which are both compatible with the maintenance of a rural open environment inconvenient to residents of such a district. These standards are found in our City Code of Chapter 17, 10, 230E. Additionally, in 1710305, it states that accessory uses and structures are intended to be secondary incidental to the principal use and structure. This section of code states a height requirement of a maximum of 24 feet for accessory buildings. The existing lot size, width, as well as the proposed lot coverage are within the standards of our code. The minimum side yard setback proposed would encroach within the required side yard by five feet. The other yard setback standards would be met. The maximum building height as proposed would also exceed standards by two feet. There are eight standards that need to be met in order to grant a variance. And I'm going to go through each one of these before you've seen these standards a few times now. So the first standard, and, oh, sorry to backtrack. The intent of granting a variance is to provide relief when strict application of the dimensional parking and landscaping requirements of the zoning code would deprive a property owner of the reasonable use of real property. And here are the eight standards that would need to be met in order for a variance to be granted. First, a granting of the variance shall be in harmony with the general provisions of this zoning code and with the comprehensive plan. Staff finds this standard is met. Our comp plan envisioned Soldatna 2030 contains a neighborhood goal that encourages the provision of a diversity of housing options. Granting the variance appears to be in harmony with the plan as this accessory structure will add a type of housing option to the property. The plan further caveats that a goal to minimize the potential of adverse impacts on surrounding areas with different style and scale of development. This area of the city has many accessory structures that incorporate mother-in-law apartments on a property, as is evident that four out of the 11 lots within a 300-foot radius of the subject property contain both a residential dwelling and a residential garage. This accessory structure is compatible with the style and scale of the surrounding development. The general future land use map within our comp plan depicts this area as suburban residential, with the intent to provide for traditional single-family residential development and compatible uses. The requested variance for the proposed structure and use meets the intent of this suburban residential classification. In our code about accessory uses and structures, they are supposed to be secondary and incidental to the principal use and structure on the lot, which are, in this, by definitions, for the convenience, enjoyment, or necessity of the principal use and structure. The applicant states the proposed accessory structure will be a garage for indoor boat storage with a mother-in-law apartment, and this aligns for the intent of accessory structures, where the proposed structure and use will be incidental to the principal structure and is for the convenience and enjoyment of the principal structure. With the exception of the side yard setback and maximum building height of an accessory structure, all other zoning standards are met. For the second condition, special conditions or circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land or structures involved, which do not apply to other lands or structures in the same zoning district, and staff finds the standard is also met. Regarding the side yard setback variance request, the subject property has a steep topography that makes development difficult on the eastern half of the lot. And on this map, there are these five-foot contour lines. As you can see, this depicts that steep bank of the Kenai River. This area is further encumbered by the 50-foot Anatomus Waters Habitat Protection, which is the dark blue, and then our Kenai River overlay district, which is the lighter blue area. There's also a small freshwater creek that runs through that bottom of the 100-foot Kenai River overlay district. Additionally, this pink box on the southern side depicts a 15-foot HEA easement. There's a primary conductor buried in that lot, at that area. And then regarding the variance for maximum building height of an accessory structure, the applicant states that the garage will be shorter than the house by three feet. The variance requested is to exceed the maximum building height for an accessory structure by two feet. And then the third standard is, special conditions or circumstances have not been caused by the actions of the applicant, and such conditions or circumstances do not merely constitute financial hardship or inconvenience. Staff finds this standard met. Regarding the side yard step back, the applicant purchased the lot with the existing residential dwelling, which is slightly centrally located, as well as the carport, which is also encumbering the lot. The placement of an accessory structure is limited by the topography and habitat protections, as well as that 15-foot electric easement. The submitted application material and subsequent emails state the variance for the accessory building height would allow for a greater pitched roof. So given these unique conditions of the parcel, the variance appears to be the most efficient solution to accommodate construction of the accessory structure that would provide for indoor boat storage and a mother-in-law apartment. The fourth condition, granting of the variance shall not result in material damage to other properties in the neighborhood nor otherwise be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. Staff finds this standard is met. Granting the variance would not affect the neighboring property owner's ability to build up to five feet from their property line if a similar variance was requested, nor would it change the requirements for firewalls. Therefore, staff finds the variance would not create material damage to the adjacent property or be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Fifth standard, granting of the variance shall represent the minimum action necessary to allow the reasonable use of land or structure. Staff finds this standard is met. The applicant has indicated that moving the garage 10 feet from the property line would be prohibitive of the placement of the replacement septic and make snow removal options between the primary residential dwelling and accessory structure more difficult, thus leaving the variance as the minimum action necessary to allow reasonable use of the structure. And the sixth, granting of the variance shall not permit a principal use that is not otherwise permitted in the zoning district. Staff finds this standard is met. The property is developed with a single-family home, which is a principal permitted use in the Rural Residential Zoning District. Accessory structures and uses are allowed within the Rural Residential Zoning District as well. Seventh, granting of the variance shall not be based upon other non-conforming land uses or structures within the same zoning district. Staff finds this standard is met. We are not aware of other non-conforming land uses or structures within the same zoning district. The request is not based on other non-conforming properties. And finally, the eighth, the applicant is current in the payment of all sales tax to the city or borough, as certified by the Borough Finance Department in a tax compliance certificate, and staff verified this. With noticing in accordance to our policy, we mailed 11 notices. We received one letter of non-objection, which is in your packet. Additional comments from our city staff is that the building official indicated the location of the building will have no effect on the fire rating or fire resistance for this building or any adjacent building. The Public Works Director mentioned that the well and septic for the mother-in-law apartment will need to be permitted through Alaska Department of Conservation. And so staff's recommendation, based upon the information submitted in the application, supporting documents and analysis of the relevant code section, staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the variance for the detached garage to encroach approximately five feet into the required 10-foot side yard setback. Staff also recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the variance to allow the garage to exceed the maximum building height by two feet, up to 26 feet. And staff recommends the following condition of approval is to provide an ASBIL after completion of the garage to ensure the building is at least five feet away from the side south property line. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chair, question?
Yeah, I was, we have, is it a question or do you want to make a comment?
Yeah. To the, providing the ASBIL after the garage is built, what do we do if it's three feet away from the side?
We have had instances that this body reviewed variance requests after construction was completed. In those cases, there's two options. The variance could be granted, or if this body decided not to grant the variance, then they would need to remove that portion of the building which is in the setback.
Thanks. Is the applicant here tonight?
The applicant is online, and I can, it's Mary Butler. I, Mary, I am going to allow you to talk if you would like to.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, I do want to thank you all very, very much for considering our application for variance. And we are very-
Aren't we supposed to start the public hearing?
Sorry, I think that, well, yeah, actually, we need to open the public hearing and then I'll, and then I'll ask you to speak. All right, I'd like to open the public comment period and if, and ask if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item, and especially if the applicant is present, I'd love for them to have the chance to go first. So, continue, Mary. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your consideration. We are really explored all options and how we can make a safe building for snow removal, while still serving the purpose and fitting the needs of the restrictions of the community. So we thank you very much for considering it, and we hope that you'll accept it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public who wishes to speak on this item? I don't think so. Is there anyone else online who wishes to speak? All right. With no one else wishing to speak, the public comment period is now closed. Are there any commissioner comments or questions for staff?
Commissioner Burton, the letter of non-objection was that from the neighbor immediately to the side of the encroachment to the setback?
No, it was on the opposite side where the home is located. Let me pull that up. It's this property here.
Okay. Now, if that, that's, if that, whatever we want to call it, an accessory dwelling unit, mother-in-law unit slash garage is going five feet into that setback, are there any potential conflicts with the neighboring property that could arise? I mean-
Snow shedding off the roof into their property or some, I don't know.
Well, through the chair, if a similar request was asked for, and it was to be less than five feet from the other side, from the neighboring side, then there would be firewall conditions because buildings cannot be greater, or can be 10-foot or greater without additional firewall separation. But when you get closer than that, then they're considered one building, and so you would need those different protections per building code. So as long as that neighboring property didn't request a variance that was even more of an encroachment than this request, it would be sufficient in that term of regulation. And then as far as snowshed goes, we do, we do ask that, well, I guess it's in, I don't even know if it's in code. If it's in code, I believe it might be in the streets code, but we have had times where somebody's roof of their eve drops snow into the city right away, and that's been an issue, but I'm not sure how that would be addressed here.
And I'm Chair Commissioner Murray. It says the applicant is a lodge, but they are not using this primary residence or clients at all?
They do rent this out on Airbnb at the moment. The applicant is a pilot, and so he is here intermittently, and I know they plan to live here once he retires.
Okay, so, so it could be, it uses an Airbnb, which would be, again, under our definitions, permissible as it's one family. It's not multiple people, because that would be a concern, you know? I mean, that, that's, that's why I wondered why it's described as a lodge.
That's the, yeah, that's the title of their LLC. I believe their, perhaps Mary can speak to this. I believe their Airbnb is for all one unit.
Yes, we just named it that because we thought it sounded good. Yeah, but we do intend to move and live there full-time. Yeah. So that is our plan. We love the property. It's beautiful. The river is amazing. Yeah. So that is our intent, certainly, to live there.
Again, through the chair, if a mother-in-law apartment is permissible, what if the applicant ordered to eventually add that to Airbnb? Would that, that would be not permissible?
Through the chair, it would be permissible. They could have that, and it would be actually owner occupied, so they could run that as, without a, without a permit even, but they currently do hold a short-term rental permit.
I'm confused. If we're describing the accessory building as a mother-in-law apartment, can it be, can it also be, can you be used as an Airbnb?
Yes.
So there can be two Airbnbs on one property? Is that, is that the question?
Yeah, so, you know, there's a different standard, I think, in terms of just a mother-in-law apartment is family, and a rental is a different approach. So I just wanted clarification. And the other question I have is, I didn't know, and I may have missed it, but normally we have a list of people that we've sent notices to. Is that because we've changed our requirement? Or why is there no listing of all the adjacent property owners?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Burton, and through the chair. So I decided to remove that, and I'll speak further in our discussion later, but I can address some of it now, is with the discrepancy of the borough redacting information, for us to provide that list now kind of is reversing that effect. So if people wanted that list, we're happy to give it, but for us to then provide a list easily accessible showing people who wanted to redact it would be counterproductive. So we're still actually meeting our requirement. I'm just removing it from the packet to slim down the packet as well, because not everything that we process needs to be included in the packet. But if that's something your commission wants, a list of everyone's name and the map, we're happy to, I'm happy to continue to move that process and continue as is. It's just the packet itself is just very elongated, and if you're trying to question staff and whether we're meeting that noticing, you know, that is the reason why I've removed it from the packet.
But they are still noticed.
So just to clarify, so that the neighboring properties were given notice, but it's not in our packet? Is that what I'm to understand has happened?
Yes, Commissioner Burton, correct. We-
Commissioner Murray, is that okay?
Commissioner Murray, yes, Murray. We are meeting our requirements, and in addition to the backend stuff and how to ensure that, that I'm making staff who's sending out these notices to do similar to city clerk to sign an affidavit stating, hey, this is who we're sending it to for this date, meeting the requirements as well, so that it's, if it's ever questioned later, we have that.
Yeah. So I just wanted to make sure that the, particularly the immediate neighbor that would be, that would potentially be affected has been notified and could have shown up and objected if they chose.
Absolutely, Commissioner Murray. We definitely did that.
Thank you.
And perhaps to add on, Lyndon and I talked about this too, is if somebody was interested in that list, that could be a public records request. So it's still available. It's in our permit file electronically, and that's readily accessible.
Are there any other comments or questions for staff? Are there any other comments or questions for staff? I did have a follow-up question. Thank you, Gary. That was a good question about the as-built. So after, I mean, I think we've had some post-requests after something has already been built and this would be a little bit different because they've brought it to us before it's being built. But I'm just curious, if, I needed some clarification for how the as-built would help us, help us with this, this decision tonight? Or when, when would we actually come, come back and say, actually, we don't, we don't want you to be able to build five feet or within that 10-foot setback? What can it help us do? Sorry, that's what I need to know.
I will go ahead and answer that. Thank you, Chair Vada. So the reason for requesting an as-built is there are a lot of times in my experience and as well as working for the adjacent city is when people build it out, they actually never build it to what they say they do. And the problem with that is non-conformity. So down the road, they sell it to someone else and it's actually closer to property line now. It's a civil matter, but it's not because we didn't follow through with the setback and what they did. And then if they build it closer, we bring it back to your commission. Do you want to reconsider? If not, then we put it, the burden back on the homeowner, the builder, to be in compliance with what you approved.
No, okay, thank you. Thank you. Sorry for my terrible question. I think the reason I ask it was maybe, I know that our building inspector, I'm sure, is insanely busy. I wonder if there's any way that we can put in the process of going out when, you know, the construction is starting rather than when it's finished to just say, hey, you're a foot to the left, you know, jiggle it over here. Instead of, instead of having to come back when the building is completely constructed and, so I don't know. Maybe Todd can, can find five minutes to go over and, but I don't know. That would, that would require lots of communication and you never know when. But, but perhaps we could, we could make a, sorry, I don't know how to succinctly put this in as a condition. But it might be, or if even Todd can, sorry, our building inspector can, can do that. But that would be great.
I agree with you, Chair.
Yeah. Yeah.
So to give a suggestion on that question, Chair Vada. So what I've also seen is some people stake it before they pour foundation and that's something that they could do, you know?
Just to have the building inspector check the-
Right, and it's because it's not up to the building inspector to determine where it starts ultimately. So that has worked well where the foundation was poured a little bit closer and they revised it before they did construction. So I think there's definitely flexibility to not put too much burden after the fact because yes, that is a lot to do. It's not a building that you could just lift up and shift over.
Or to request that they survey the lot line and, and measure off the lot line before they, they, they build or something.
Yeah, so I would suggest that amending that condition to say prior to the foundation or prior to construction, that the applicant will stake the corners or to ensure that it will meet setbacks.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll give you an example of what happened in our neighborhood. I owned a lot and I had it surveyed and I come to find out that the neighboring house went six feet over the property line, the house.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think people think their lots are all over the place until you get it surveyed.
Thirty years ago, so, you know. I didn't do anything about it, you know?
Yeah.
When, when he sells it or the person that owns the lot now sells it, then I guess they'll have to figure it out.
Madam Chair, just a follow-up question. You know, an accessory building, I just looked at the, the packet again, and 2,880 square feet for an accessory building? That's a pretty big accessory building.
Yeah.
Is that, is there any limits on accessory building in terms of square footage? Because, I mean, that, that, I don't know what the house is, but I would assume it's, maybe it's 3,500, not much more.
Through the chair, our code does not have that limit. Some municipalities do, however, ours doesn't.
But they have building height limits, you know?
Yeah, well, I mean, those, and that's what we're trying to prove tonight is variances from those two specific things. But, you know, also size matters. Thank you.
Right. Do we need to vote on this before amending? No, or can I ask that it, do I need to formally request that it be amended? Okay. Do I need to make a motion? I would like to make a motion to add a clause in there about construction. May I have a second? Sorry.
Second.
All right, thank you. Now we can discuss what that would be. And I liked Linda's language. Could you say that prior to construction, applicant will survey and stake the lot line to ensure it is, that it is indeed five feet from the actual lot line? Then now we'll vote on that amendment. Is that, is that okay?
If I might just interject, I'm sorry, with this, that was surveyed very recently and it is all, yeah, already.
All right.
That makes a difference. And so these measurements were made off of a very recent survey that was done within probably the past six or eight weeks.
Okay, great. Well, then I think it'll be really easy for you to, to, to meet the, the, you won't need to like re, re-survey, but just providing, providing the survey that you, that you just recently got and then making sure you use it to measure off the line. You'll, you'll meet our, our request here. Thank you for letting me know that.
You're, you're very welcome. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, thank you. Thank you so much. We're, we're very grateful that you're here to answer questions and, and that you're taking the time to, to join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that will, to ensure that it is, maybe just to say, ensure that it is indeed, or in fact, five feet from the actual lot line. If you can think of a better way to say that intent, that's, that's fine. You want me to, or do you want to read it? Sorry, thank you for-
So, okay, so the, the motion then is to amend the resolution to add a condition upon the resolution that prior to construction, the applicant was survey and stake the lot line to ensure it is five feet from the lot line?
Thank you.
To ensure, wait, sorry, to ensure, I just, let me get, let me take a moment. The lot line to ensure, to ensure the accessory structure. All right, let me read that again.
Thank you for wordsmithing. On the fly.
Okay, so the motion is that to amend the resolution to add a condition upon the resolution that prior to construction, the applicant will survey and stake the lot line to ensure the accessory structure is five feet from the lot line?
Thank you.
Five feet or less.
Or greater?
Or greater.
Okay, five feet or greater.
Yeah.
Okay, I will read that one more time. Okay, to amend the resolution to add a condition upon the resolution that prior to construction, the applicant will survey and stake the lot line to ensure the accessory structure is five feet or greater from the lot line?
Thank you. Can staff call for the vote?
So this is on the vote to amend the resolution. Commissioner Toppest?
Yes.
Before we do that, Madam Chair, wouldn't we also want to put in that verified by the building inspector?
Yeah, can we ask?
Or is that?
I mean, we can, we can.
Is that appropriate?
I don't know that, I don't know that he would be, but it is, I would love for that to be part of any variance that we, that we grant is getting the building inspector involved or somebody from the city. But if that's very out of the norm, then that's good to know too.
I would just ask staff, what's the policy?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Murray, and through the chair. So I would say it's implied if the building official can do that by saying verified by the official. It's assuming that he's staking it. I mean, if they're staking it, he'll verify that where they do construction is. I don't want to be explicit as if he's going to verify the stake is in the right place. That's the burden on the applicant. When he does his inspection, he's going to go out there and base it what he sees as staked. So I prefer not to put that language in there just to alleviate any confusion or expectation on the building official. He's already doing that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burton, just for my clarity, this amendment, are we still requiring the applicant to submit an as-built or does this replace the as-built?
I think we're just adding it on to that.
Just adding on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, I think we can now call for the vote.
Right. So the vote on the motion to amend the resolution, Commissioner Toppest?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Burton?
Yes.
And Chair Vada?
Yes.
You have five yes votes, zero no votes, and two absent votes. The motion to amend the resolution passes.
And now, can we call for the vote on the main motion?
Right. The vote on the main motion as amended, Commissioner Toppest?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Burton?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
And Chair Vada?
Yes.
You have five yes votes, zero no votes, and two absent votes. The motion passes.
Thank you. And thank you for such a thorough staff report and really great photos and maps. It's really easy to make, very clear. Appreciated. All right, moving on to our second resolution, PZ 2024-014, granting a variance to the rear yard setback for an attached deck at 42205 Sterling Highway. May I have a motion to approve?
Commissioner Murray, I'd move to approve Resolution Number PZ 2024-014.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. We have the staff report, please.
On September 12th, Daniel and Johnny Blinkenship, the owners of 42205 Sterling Highway, applied for a variance to construct the corner of a two-story deck within the rear yard setback. Of the entire 1,735-square-foot attached deck, approximately 180 square feet of the southwest corner would extend into the setback. At the greatest distance, the encroachment would be approximately 11 feet into the 20-foot setback, leaving the corner of the deck nine feet from the property line at its closest point. The rationality of this request is due to restrictions on the lot of buildable space. This lot is in the center of the Birch Ridge Golf Course with steep topography that slopes to the north and to the east. The property is surrounded by the golf course with the exception of a single residence to the southeast. The variance allows for the preservation of the golf course's open and natural setting while negating effects to the neighboring property owners and minimizes disruption to the golf course itself. The applicant's plan to construct a 1,800-square-foot home, which will be completely outside of all yard setbacks. This variance request is only for a portion of an attached deck. Although, like you just heard, the Rural Residential Zoning District is intended to provide for stable, quiet, low-density residential development and other uses which are both compatible and with the maintenance of a rural, open environment and convenience to the residents of such a district. These standards are found in our chapter code 1710-230E. The existing lot size and width, as well as the proposed lot coverage and building height, are within the standards of the municipal code. The minimum rear yard setback proposed would encroach within the required setback, or within the required yard by 11 feet. However, all other yard setback standards would be met. The intent of a variance is to provide relief when the strict applications of dimensional parking and landscaping requirements of the zoning code would deprive a property owner of reasonable use of their property. And again, as you just saw, there are eight standards that need to be met in order to grant a variance and I will go over each of these. For the first standard, granting the variance shall be in harmony with the general provisions of the zoning code and with our comprehensive plan. Staff finds the standard is met. In Vision Sold Out in a 2030 states that some conflicts associated with the interaction between commercial and residential developments may occur. This lot is an example where commercial and residential development is in harmony, as many communities view living adjacent to a golf course as desirable. Another goal from In Vision Sold Out in a 2030 is to encourage active neighbors, neighborhoods that incorporate activities for people of all ages. The development of housing within the golf course supports this goal as well. Within the comp plan is the generalized future land use map and this depicts the area as rural or residential with the intent to reflect low-density residential development with primary use of single-family and two-family dwellings. The requested variance for the proposed structure generally meets the intent of this classification. With the exception of the rear yard setback, all other zoning standards are met. For the second condition, special conditions or circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land or structures involved, which do not apply to other lands or structures in the same zoning district. Staff finds this standard is met. The eighth fairway of the Birch Ridge Golf Course traverses the eastern portion of the lot. That is this green area with tighter lines here. The golf course was established in 1972 and became legal non-conforming in use when the city was given zoning authority in 1984. A 2016 plating action created Track A1B, which is this property in question, and subdivided the golf course into multiple lots. The resulting subdivided parcels were granted the same status of legal non-conforming use as the parent parcel and the use of Track A1B remains part of the golf course. The eighth fairway blocks access to the platted right-of-way Boundary Street. Boundary Street is here on the map. And thus it necessitates the recorded easement through Track A1A, which is the larger portion of the golf course here. And so there's a recorded easement through Track A1A1 from the Sterling Highway to allow access to the lot. Another peculiar circumstance subject to this property is that the adjacent area is, is of a teeing for hole three. The tee box for hole three is adjacent. And thus the direction of the golf balls has a rationale to place the home further away from the teeing area. If the eighth fairway did not traverse the lot, Track A1B has steep topography that makes development difficult of the eastern portion of the lot. And that is, again, here are these five-foot contours which depicts the steep topography of the lot. The applicant states that to build a level foundation, significant grading would be required along with the importation of a large volume of fill materials. This topographical challenge, combined with the need to preserve the golf course's natural setting, restricts the feasible area for constructing both the residence and the proposed deck. The third condition, the special conditions or circumstances have not been caused by the actions of the applicant. In such conditions or circumstances do not merely constitute financial hardship or inconvenience. Staff finds the standard is met. None of the encumbrances on the property were caused by the applicant. The subject property was created through a plating action in 2016 that did not take into consideration the existing golf course and how it may affect access from the platted right-of-way Boundary Street. Although the applicant states that approving the variance will result in cost savings as it will reduce the amount of fill needed, staff finds finance is not the main reason for the variance request. Efforts were made to arrange the home on site to meet the setback requirements within the district. Given the unique conditions of this parcel, the variance appears to be the most efficient solution to accommodate construction of the deck. The fourth standard, granting of the variance shall not result in material damage to other properties in the neighborhood nor otherwise detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. Staff finds this standard is met. The applicant submitted letters from neighboring property owners who have expressed support for the development of the lot and relaxation of the development standards of the setback. And these letters are found in your packet. Additionally, granting the variance would not affect the neighboring property owner's ability to encroach into the setback if a similar variance was requested, nor would it change the requirements for firewalls. Therefore, staff finds the variance would not create, create material damage to the adjacent property or be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. The fifth standard, granting of the variance shall represent the minimum action necessary to allow the reasonable use of land or structure. Staff finds the standard is met. The applicant has indicated that moving the deck 20 feet away from the property line would be prohibitive of the subsequent placement of the single-family dwelling due to the restrictions on the lot as being part of the golf course. A variance is likely the minimum action necessary to allow reasonable use of this plot. Staff finds that granting a variance for the attached deck is a reasonable alternative. The sixth standard, granting of the variance shall not permit a principal use that is not otherwise permitted in the zoning district. Staff finds the standard is met. The proposed single-family dwelling is a permitted- single-family dwelling is a permitted principal use in the Rural Residential Zoning District. The golf course running partially through the subject property is illegal non-conforming use. The existing and proposed single-family dwelling would be allowed in this district. Seventh, granting of the variance shall not be based upon other non-conforming land uses or structures within the same zoning district. Staff finds the standard is met. The golf course and the recreational lodging are non-conforming land uses within the Rural Residential Zoning District. The golf course and recreational lodge are not considered or the basis of the requested variance. Staff concludes the request is not based on any other non-conforming properties. And finally, the eighth, the applicant is current in the payment of any sales tax to the city or borough as certified through the Borough Finance Department and our tax compliance certificate. Staff finds this met. I verified with both the Kenai Peninsula Borough and our city staff. With noticing in accordance to our, in accordance to our code, we mailed out nine notices to property owners within 300 feet notifying them of the proposed variance. At this time, staff of the staff report, staff received two letters of non-objection and support, which were included in the application, one from the golf course owner Zachary and Anna Cowan, sorry, Cowan.
Cowan.
Cowan, and the other from the property owners of the south, Pat and Myrna Cowan. In additional comments, the city, from city staff, the city's building official indicated that the location of the building will have no effect on fire ratings or fire resistance for this building or any adjacent building. And so, it is staff's recommendation that based upon the information submitted in the application, supporting documents and analysis of the relevant code sections, staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the variance for the attached deck to encroach approximately 11 feet into the required 20-foot rear yard setback. Staff recommends the following condition of approval: Provide an as-built after completion of the deck to ensure the development is at least nine feet away from the rear property line. Thank you.
Wonderful staff report. The public comment period is now open. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Johnny Blinkenship, 35260 Rockwood Drive. And of course, thank you so much for considering our variance, and thank you to staff for doing such a fabulous job. I really don't have a whole lot to add, but I'm here if you have any questions. The one thing I will say, on second thought, I have something to add, is the lot is very odd, and you can see that we do not approach the property from the Boundary Street. And so, what is considered the front of the lot and the back of the lot is a little bit askew here.
Yeah.
So, based on that, we really are going to enter from where basically that little driveway is right there. Yeah. So, that's what we consider the front, even though that's not how it's interpreted. So, that just makes it a little bit more unique. So, thank you, and I'm here for questions.
So, who has right-of-way if someone's teeing and if you're waiting to get to your house?
Oh, it's the golfer.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's right. I have no further questions. Does anyone else have a question?
Madam Chair, on page, what's page six on my report, it shows the proposed house location. When I look at, if I'm looking at the as-built correctly, it appears to me that the 20-foot setback is met. What doesn't appear to be met is the side yard lot, distance from the deck, which is 9.1 feet. Am I reading that correctly?
Through the chair, you are reading that exactly correctly. So, the home is completely within all of the required setbacks. So, it's completely outside of all the required setbacks. So, the home itself meets our code. What is being asked for is just this corner of the lot, which is approximately 180 square feet.
Were you thinking that the back of the house is, so that is the, I don't know why, I guess that's just, that was the backyard when the lot was drawn, because it was assumed that the address, the entry would be from Boundary Street? And so, I think that's what she was saying.
Okay.
Yep.
So, it's the, it's where it's located?
Right.
Okay.
No, I mean, it kind of makes sense that we should just call that the side yard, and then, you know, you're pretty close, so.
Considered the back of the property, but really not the back of the property.
Not the back, yeah.
Hence the askew.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments before we call for the vote?
Commissioner Burton, since the deck is within the setback, our last resolution, we added staking out, having either the building inspector or somebody qualified to come and take a look at it. I would like to make a motion to include that amendment to this resolution as well, using similar language.
Thank you. Yep.
All right. So, the motion, well, is there any discussion on the motion to amend? So, the vote on the motion to amend, then. The motion would read that the resolution would be amended in order for a condition to be placed upon the resolution, that prior to construction of the deck, the applicant will survey and stake the lot line to ensure the deck is at least nine feet or greater from the lot line.
Thank you. And so, I think that you'd need to say, "I move to amend Resolution PZ 2024-014."
I move to amend PZ 2024-014.
To include that statement.
To include the statement read by Jen Hester, the associate planner.
I'll second.
Okay. And so, vote on the motion to amend the resolution. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Burton?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Topfes?
Yes.
And Chair Vada?
Yes.
You have five yes votes, zero no votes, and two absent votes, and the motion to amend the resolution passes.
Thank you. And now, can we call a vote for the main motion?
All right. The vote on the main motion as amended, Commissioner Burton?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Topfes?
Yes.
And Chair Vada?
Yes.
The main motion has five yes votes, zero no votes, and two absent votes. The motion as amended passes.
Thank you, and thank you for coming.
Madam Chair, I do have a clarification question, and I don't know if, it doesn't apply to this case, but aren't we, isn't a property owner supposed to have platted access to their property?
That's a good question.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray, for that question through the chair. Yes, so this plot had the platted right-of-way through the Boundary Street, but code doesn't say that you have to use that as your right-of-way access. There are other properties where sometimes they use a secondary access. So, this is the problem with this lot, is when we plotted it, we didn't look at the underlying uses, because I think maybe the way this was plotted would have looked a lot different to ensure the platted right-of-way was accessible. But our code just says, yes, they have a, need a platted right-of-way. Is that their only access to the lot? No. In the case of this one, they have a recorded easement through the golf course to get access. So, as long as they have a recorded access easement or a platted right-of-way through a public street, then that repurposing process is acceptable.
Can I ask where it's recorded? Is it just, or just for my clarification?
It's recorded through the Kenai Recording District, and we verified it with the existing, I mean, in this plot, it shows the underlying driveway easement, but they further require another easement to show access from there to this lot.
Thanks. All right. Moving on to new business, we have an amendment to our comprehensive plan and the work plan that Linda brought up last meeting. And, sorry, I'd love a report from Director Mitchell.
Thank you, Chair Vada and Commissioners. So, I wanted to recap the last work session that everyone was here to ensure that we're all on the same page and moving forward, that staff is really going in a direction that your commissioner is supportive of. And so, part of that work plan is really updating the data set in there about the demographic, the people, fiscal spending. And so, these are kind of the first three aspects that staff sees as important before we start making other amendments, is knowing what is the population we're serving, what's the demographic that we're serving, and what is the land use, the zoning, the designation of what it looks like to then with that information. Let's look at what we need to amend. So, with that being said, the first leg of this is the existing conditions for people and economy. Really, this is the data set of demographics, population, and I've been getting assistance from the Assistant City Manager doing all this back work. So, I'm hoping that by next meeting, I will have all this data set for that first part of people and economy for your commission to review. And so, what I'm thinking as we're going through this, I'm going to provide all the data set, all the information, and with your comments and feedback, revise it, refine it, and that at the end of this, when we go to public hearing, you know, we're going to do a resolution to recommend to city council to adopt and amend the comp plan. And so, the second phase would be the land use. This is the inventory of land as designated. As you can imagine how much has changed with rezones and replating. So, areas of certain zones have changed. Maybe they've been enlarged. Maybe we have more residential than commercial. So, that part of the comp plan will be amended or updated. And then, lastly, which I find to be important, is all the actions of rezones that has been enacted to reflect that in the comp plan, to update that future land use map, to really see where we are at and see where a commission may want to initiate change versus always waiting to be reactive and waiting for these rezones to come before you. We can be proactive and look at areas that's been changing and make those changes beforehand. So, at that point, anticipating with enough public hearing, February, March, your commission will see a resolution to provide a recommendation to council, and then council will hear sometime in April. And so, ultimately, my goal is to have something on the books, to see a timeline for your commission, so that we're working towards something versus just saying we're going to do something. So, again, this is just a work plan. We can pivot as needed. It's not set in stone. This is where I'm going to go, and if we need a pivot, I'm happy to do so. And so, really, this evening, I'm hoping to see if any comments, suggestions on this first leg, and as we keep going through, I'm hoping to do this as an annual thing. This will be the first work plan this year, next year, and the fall, we'll do another work plan, and keep looking at at least on an annual basis.
Great.
Through the chair, question. How is this going to affect staff? Is this, in my knowledge, that's quite a bit of work there. Does staff have the amount of time to do it without overtime or downtime? It's a big lift.
It is, and I appreciate that question, Commissioner Turner, through the chair. Right now, I'm breaking it piecemeal. The goal is to take my time. I mean, I'm not, I think a month's time to do a small section is feasible, and if I need more time, I will probably ask, hey, we might need a step back. But I'm also using other city staff who are maybe better at finding data set to help me. I'm not just using our staff alone. I think this is an effort to see how city, citywide can collaborate and work together on making this update, I think is much needed. And if we don't piecemeal it and work towards changing it, we won't see any change until the next major update. And this is the problem with most comp plan. They're just so outdated. That is not a really effective tool for your commission or council. So, as of right now, I don't anticipate, as long as we kind of work on a small work plan at a time, I think it's feasible.
I'm just concerned about staff burnout.
I really appreciate that, because I would be one to overwork myself. So, no, I would speak up.
Got your word for it.
I know. How do we save you from yourself?
Right.
No, we're so excited that this is on the table, and yeah, if more time is needed so that, you know, so that you stick around for the long term and don't just bright start it, you know, this updated comp plan, but then you're not here for 20 years. And yeah, no. This is wonderful. Thank you so much for putting this on the, on the table.
Through the chair, I'm just looking at some of the language. So, and we see the placard here. So, if I'm understanding it correctly, if, using the example of the Endicott situation, there would be, this placard would be in the right-of-way adjacent to the petitioner's property that's requesting a variance. Is that, is that my understanding of how it will work?
Are you jumping to the next one, Commissioner Murray?
Pardon?
Is that, is, I think that's.
Well, oh, I'm sorry. Am I ahead of myself?
I think you are. I think you are.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it's okay. You're just so far ahead of all of us. We're really just trying to keep up with you.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. Yeah, yeah. Anything else on the, on the amending of the comp plan, work plan?
I think it's a great action plan, and I'm looking forward to seeing how this goes. And I echo what Commissioner Turner and Chair Vada, you know, said. There's, you know, we're, everybody's flexible, so, you know, you don't want to overwork yourself, but it's very exciting. It's great.
Yeah.
Just, just to really get sticky, Madam Chair, so going back to the two K, or at least the Endicott case, so the question of the list of adjacent property owners is redacted at the borough, and so therefore not, not available to us. And, you know, it was a long list of things, but did we include in there that we noticed all the property owners that would be affected and within our regulations would receive notice? I don't remember seeing that, but maybe I didn't read it. Is it there? You know, so, not to belabor the point, but I think we would get into a lot of trouble if, you know, and I think you said that, that we send notices out, we have a record of sending notices out, you know, but probably it should be, I mean, if it isn't, it should be, you know, all property owners affected per our regulations were notified of this request for variance or whatever, whatever the issue is. Did we do that, and I just missed it?
So, thank you for that question, Commissioner Murray, and through the chair. So, there's a provision in our staff report, or sorry, a blurb in our staff report about in accordance to the code section, that property owners within the affected 300, affected property owners within 300 feet will be notified. And then, in the resolution itself, there's a very simplified language about that we adhere to our public hearing, which if you go back to the code, says affected property owners within 300 feet are notified. So, I believe and confidently say that we have the language in both staff report and resolution to state so. And again, if a records request was pulled, we will have an affidavit to state that staff sent out mailers to all affected property owners in accordance with our public hearing notice requirements.
I figured that was the case, but, you know, it was in the minutia, and it wasn't our past practice of seeing a list and who. Okay, thank you.
I think that's, that's good practice. Yeah, I'd like it to still be in there. All right. Any other questions on the comp plan? Comments? Yeah, and I think we're, the idea is to bring the drafts, I think, to this commission, and then we can look through them and offer any suggestions or edits or help, and, and help in the way that we can. So, moving on to the next item of new business, the recap of the commercial corridor work plan. Very exciting. And another report from Director Mitchell.
Thank you, Chair Vada. So, I've spent some time digging through all the files and reading all your minutes regarding anything related to the commercial corridor, as well as the joint work session that was held between your commission and the city council back in March of last year. So, ultimately, I'm now familiar with the resolution, the substitute resolution that was adopted. And what I've come to find out is just, we do need another resolution for the zoning map. Where are we going to apply this new commercial corridor? Because without an area to rezone, adopting this doesn't change what, I think you're
Because without an area to rezone, adopting this doesn't change what you, I think your commission has just been longing to see is to stop certain uses within this corridor. Because if we don't have a map, it doesn't apply to an area. So in order to be effective and move through this process, I'm creating a timeline where we review a proposed map, at least a boundary, so that staff can notify and reach out to potentially these affected property owners of this new zone and these uses that might be prohibited, which would then put them in a non-conforming use. So we need to do proper noticing so that people can really understand how this zoning can change or affect their business. And then go through a resolution to draft the boundaries. And I know it's been a while since you've seen some very preliminary commercial corridor. I wasn't there to have that discussion with you. And so at the next meeting, I would like to go back to the drawing board of, is this what you last left off with, this boundary? Because there were kind of a few iterations where there are minor adjustments, and I'm not really sure what we left off with. Jen, if you can go to our meeting folder for this meeting, I, yeah, perfect. So this, I believe, may have been the latest because Jenny had sent me one from back in January 2022, and this is slightly different. So I don't know how much everyone recalls the area, the discussion. This one further refined and removed certain commercial quarter that has residential development. So I like to believe this is what was last left off with. But I don't know a certainty without your commission's feedback. I can work with this, but I don't, until I know a certain boundary, I can't do proper noticing. Because who am I reaching out to to notify they may be affected? So I would love to hear feedback if this is the map that you recalled. The latest one that you last left off with. Okay, then I could move forward with this. I will look at it in more detail of the existing uses and point out some what I noticed, how this aligns with the substitute resolution and this boundary, and kind of highlight some changes as well within that substitute resolutions that, just housekeeping changes for a lot. There's just some things I will point out then when I bring it back to your commission. So once I bring it back with a preliminary map area that we like to rezone, then staff can move forward with at least sending out notices to all these property owners and then potentially giving them a link to that substitute resolution so they can anticipate how this may affect them. I think some of the big things that were mentioned in the joint work sessions were non-conforming uses. So then I had to familiarize myself with the non-conforming code section. Our code may need some revisions because when it comes to non-conforming, if this land use table in this new district now prohibits a use and doesn't allow as conditional, they cannot enlarge or expand. That's a big deal, I think, for some people, depending on how this land use table. It is an odd, a very specific way of saying when you can and cannot. It's because it says you can only enlarge or expand if the land use table says it's a conditional use. So the question is, do we change the non-conforming to remove that so that legal non-conforming could expand to a certain use? Or do we absolutely want them to keep as is and that's all they can expand? You know, the question is about a little bit of flexibility. I've seen code where non-conforming can enlarge up to 25% without the burden of a CUP or public hearing. You know, there's areas we can look at flexibility depending on the uses that are affected. And that's what I'm hoping to bring back to your commission as well for consideration of what other areas we need to amend code to really make it more adaptive and really not affect property owners or businesses to where they're going to panic and really still support them. So that's what I'm hoping to bring back in the next meeting is a preliminary map and then code revisions to the substitute. And of course, any background or feedback that you've had since your past efforts that I can't take away from reading minutes and staff reports, I welcome that right now because anything that you can tell me helps me.
Yeah, I mean, I think this, we were hoping at the time, a year and a half ago, that we could put something in place that was a stopgap until more thorough and official changes could be made. And I think perhaps that was a naive idea because it definitely stopped when it hit city council. And, you know, we were hopeful that we could, you know, I think often these types of zoning changes are seen as like restricting all sorts of things. But I think what we're really hoping to do is to guide a vision of what our downtown, we hope, looks like and hope includes more of. And so I wonder if, you know, I see this now based on like having a map and noticing, I think we assumed that that would happen once it went to city council. But because it stopped, we never got to that part of the process. But I think that if there's time, when this comes back to the table next month, it'd be, I'd love to know what other communities do or if you've seen other things that have made it, like you said, so that we're taking care of the businesses in our downtown and really encouraging the uses that we do want. Maybe there's property tax breaks or other incentives that we can offer businesses to do the things that we are especially primary or principal uses. Because, you know, we don't want more storage units in our downtown. We want more, you know, entertainment and, you know, some house, you know, I think we do want housing too. And that was, that was one of the, actually, I think that was a conditional use. But anyways, yeah, knowing what other communities have done in order to make this type of zoning change, not just a stick, but also a carrot, would be wonderful.
Thank you for that comment. I do want to point out that, you know, from a staff perspective and knowing kind of the sense of urgency with this is when you have a larger area you're rezoning and you're going to probably hear a lot more. I think the public hearing process might take a little longer. I don't know if there's flexibility to rezone primarily near the riverfront area because I felt like based on the minutes, that was kind of the holdup of waiting for the riverfront redevelopment to be adopted. So another consideration is if you want this to potentially be dragged out is because of the how large this area is. So just anticipate that. Or if you are more, you know, your goal is to more be more focused on the, around the riverfront, then you kind of confine that right now for the time being so that, because it's a lot of property owners. It's, we need to ensure that they're hearing and understanding the changes and how they affect them. So just something to think about. If we make the area more confined and then come back after of the general area with a different, you know, there's different ways. The question is, would you be okay if it took a little longer, you know? Because with this larger area, I think it's going to take a little bit longer realistically.
Could we, I mean, I guess piecemeal it and essentially chunk it up and have a timeline where we focus on, say, the lower portion near the river, rezone it and then have a timeline for each chunk? That way, we're expediting it instead of trying to get through everybody, all these property owners. I'm not sure if that's something that would interest the commission guys.
I thank you for that comment, Commissioner Burton. So, you know, sometimes the question, since I wasn't here in the early stages, is, you know, do you want the same uses all both on both sides, you know, of the corridor? Because if you do one side only, then the other business is like, well, why can they do across the street? Or these could have across the street and I can't? So typically for this, I would say at least at a minimum on both sides of the street, unless that there's a good reason for it. You know, you, I can't anticipate who would come out and show, but that usually is, you don't want to do one side only unless there's good reason. And if you look at the draft ordinance for a rezone within the riverfront appendix, you know, it's a very hybrid section of this corridor as a certain zoning district makes use, but it's the whole area of the riverfront. It kind of is imagining a comprehensive area and how it'll be developed. That makes sense to do sections at a time and different zonings. But to say different and piecemeal across the street, I'm not sure if that would be ideal. I think we might run into some concerns.
I do remember an earlier version of the map maybe stopping at the Y or somewhere around there. But then the discussion was had that there's a lot of businesses, you know, there is Fred Meyers and that's a large parcel, but it's still an area that's walked to quite frequently. And then you have the pizza, the pizza place, St. Elias up the road. And then also the Addy Camp properties are another place that have become this sort of walkable destination, especially when they had some of their fairs up there or markets or something. You did have more. So I think this would be the larger vision of, you know, we want this walkable or at least, you know, safer place to be a pedestrian and have more downtown, more of a downtown feel. But I could see us first tackling the, you know, the properties on both sides of the highway to the Y and then, and then the next section later on, if you think that would be helpful. But most of the property owners are concentrated in that lower section. So it, I don't know. And I don't know if anyone else remembers the conversation. It's been a year and a half.
I just remember without that corner, it just kind of falls apart. So if you're talking about, you know, the priorities, the corner has got to be central.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we should just, whatever staff thinks is going to be ultimately the best way to create a downtown district in the end, I think, however we get there is. And I think education is paramount, you know, taking time to do outreach to each property owner before we bring something up so that they don't have, you know, hopefully will be excited about being a part of a downtown that feels more like a downtown and see the benefit to their business and the city.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I think the fieldhouse will tell us a lot.
Yeah.
That would be our major test in terms of how many people show up.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments. And so what I'm thinking is I'll maybe craft some alternative if we're not, if we want to consider a smaller area, the rationale why. And it's not necessary to say this is it. We can work on or focus on this area and recognizing that this is the connectivity of this whole area of the downtown walking, walkability area. And then maybe phase two is a different zone. Because what I see in this commercial corridor is, you know, prohibiting uses of retail sales and you have your dealership right there. And that's really not aligned with, you're putting a, because if they were ever to go out of business, what else do you see coming into that building? You know, you kind of have to anticipate if someone came back in, what is going to be? Is it going to sit as a vacant if it was to be reused as something else? So I'm always thinking long term as well, not anticipating that something will be there forever. So these are the things I'm thinking of, and I'm happy to kind of give you my take on things. And we can kind of refine it as we go. I think the sense of urgency is just really figuring out where these, the boundary of the first rezone is going to occur so that staff can do public engagement, educating correctly about the concerns of non-conforming. Because it seems to be a big topic when you rezone an area like this.
For non-conforming use, for my clarity, if the business owner sells it and it was a non-conforming use, a new owner comes in with the same type of business, that non-conforming use can continue with, through a different owner, correct? As a non-conforming use, I mean?
Thank you, Commissioner Burton, for that question. And through the chair, yes, but there's a time limit. Because if a non-conforming use is abandoned or left or cease operation continuously for 12 months, you lose that nonconformity. Maybe that's, this is where we revise our code to say 18 months because our seasons are different, right? Because that 12 month is not realistic. I don't think anything 12 months in the city or in Alaska is ideal just with our harsher winter constructions and stuff. I think that's a consideration is potentially extending that timeline because things sit on the market. So right now, yeah, if there's a vacancy and it's a non-conforming use, assuming it's non-conforming, if it sits there for long, up longer than 12 months, you lose that nonconformity. So, but yes, if anyone comes in within that timeframe, you continue it. You're allowed to continue it.
Yeah, and I think that would be a key point to make to property owners. You know, what, you know, what do we currently have? And does anybody have any ideas as to what that means?
Yes, we, I think when John gave you a joint work session, he highlighted some of the non-conforming businesses or businesses that would be non-conform, become non-conforming due to this commercial corridor. So there's some homework and legwork that's been done. So my goal is to really hone down the existing uses and really probably have, reach out individually to ensure these property owners and tenants recognize what's going on and how this may affect them. And maybe do open houses as well. I want to, I don't want people to be surprised or assume anything. You know, when people hear grandfather, they just assume, oh, I'm good, I'm locked in. But that is, there's definitely some, yep, absolutely. Yep. Now, and I made aware of it in the last, well, in the joint work session, that that was a topic of conversation. And I've been thinking about ways to amend it to address some of the concerns.
Are there any other comments or questions on this item? Lots of wheels turning, I think. This is a, this has been something that we, I think, really wanted to move forward for a while. So thank you for bringing it up and giving it life. But I think we can move on. Yep, all right. Moving on to the new business item number three, proposed zoning code text amendment. Now is your chance, Commissioner Murray. And but first, a report from Director Mitchell.
So I'm taking a little bit different approach because I can appreciate commission very involved in vocal. Usually I think the normal practice is staff brings a resolution of amendment and then we do a public hearing, we talk about it. So I'm taking a different approach that I'm going to do as a new business, have that discussion with your commission, kind of get feedback first before spending a lot of time on a resolution that your commission wants to go a very different route. So this is why I'm bringing forth as a new business to discuss what I would like to propose for a text amendment when it comes to our public hearing notice. So this is really, our public hearing notice process right now is typically applies to conditional use permits, variance, appeal to an administrative decision, amendments to the zoning map, text amendment to the zoning code, as well as the plat recommendation to the borough. So that requirement requires notice in mail, notices to affected property owners within 300 feet of the petition property at least seven days before the meeting. In addition, I put the asterisk because of last year's code amendment. Code was changed to reduce or get rid of the newspaper due to like the reduced amount of noticing or advertisements or publication of the newspaper. So for those, last year's amendment, a new language said, reasonable public notice of the public hearing shall be given as required by law in accordance with standard practice of providing public notice. And part of last year's amendment as well is because we have a policy, which is included in this packet, on how we do our noticing. Where do we publish it, on bulletins and so forth? So that's the process we're following. Yeah, our public engagement and communication policy. And it talks about what we need to do for planning and zoning commission on our website and so forth as well. So I just like consistency all across the board and mostly.
So I just like consistency all across the board and mostly with the borough. So I just want to clarify that the borough is not, they redact only information when a property owner specifically requests for their information to not made public on their GIS map. So the borough has given us the list, access to their map with all property owners, including the redacted. So it's just not readily accessible by the public. So now we can ensure that we're going to notify everyone within the 300 feet of the subject property. And then in our subdivision, we have a similar language, but slightly off, that I want to align with that last year's amendment. And that's ultimately, the current language says that we, we will, at least seven days prior to the meeting, a copy of the subdivision request and meeting information shall be mailed to the applicant owners of real property within 300 feet of the property to be acted upon, as shown on the borough's assessor's public parcel information record. So that means if we use the redacted information, we still meet the code because that's what's on the public. So I just want consistency and keep it simple and just say as shown in the borough's assessor's record, because that keeps it a gray area. And for, I just like consistency. I don't want to keep a loophole. So what I'm asking is that we redact that public parcel information because that's giving potentially a direction. If I'm not here, anyone who's reading this will ensure that they're referring to the borough's assessor's record, meaning all property owners. So that is the first amendment that I'm, I'm looking to bring forth to your commission to consider is updating the noticing requirement when it comes to subdivision plats, how we notify, that just we remove that language that says public parcel information. And that's it. Not adding anything to it, just removing that we're just going straight to the, referring to the borough's assessor's record. Second part that staff is requesting to amend is something that John brought forth that should be included is posting notice onsite for public hearing. And I think we heard that at the rezone as well. And so before you in this room, you can see in the corner is an example of an onsite notice that we would potentially provide on the premise during a public hearing that for items before you. So people can drive by and see something. We're going to do it by color so that this will start ingraining when you're driving around, you see certain, you know what kind of petition is going to be. So there could be a zoning variance, a sign variance, a CUP. She's going to show the other side, a rezone request. So this is keeping it simple because I don't want to have to reprint every specific site. This is what other cities do. They'll use not, you can't recycle them either. The signage and you handwrite them or you print them and it's, it's just a waste. This can be used and reused over time. The scan QR code will then go to a site with the project information. Now they can actually not have, they can just be linked to the product, public meeting or the project information as well. And from there, we can, they can reach out to staff. So basic information, but hopefully that is a glaring flag of, hey, there's something going on at the site. And so I kept it very basic in terms of the language itself, that the sign should be posted at least 12 days before the meeting, at least one sign along pretty much street frontages. And if there's a property where it's not clear or a street that doesn't go anywhere and you can't get to it readily, easy, easy, then you'll go to the nearest street. I kind of anticipated every scenario to ensure that an onsite posting is visible to those driving through a neighborhood so they can know what's going on. So this is in supplementing with the noticing mailers as well. So, and then something that I know that has been brought up in the past with past experiences, if a sign gets removed or through snow removal, that doesn't discredit that we haven't met our public noticing. So that's a second paragraph that if it's removed at no fault of either the applicant petition or property owner or the city, that it doesn't deem as failure to comply with this code. And then the only exceptions that are exempt are administrative appeals, zoning tax amendments in major district boundaries because it's just such a large area. There's not really a property, one singular property that would be affected to put a sign or for staff to decide where is the best area for these. So any questions about this? Any feedback, code revisions? Ultimately, this is just a very preliminary draft of posted onsite.
Um, I guess the QR code would be very helpful if someone were seeing that, then they could get the details without having to come to the city or, because typically when we send out the notices, it's just they're having a public hearing on this, but that's, it's a one pager, right? This would be, would this be similar to what we would see a total packet or would be a, would be a synopsis of it?
Ideally, I mean, I haven't thought that far, but what I prefer is a synopsis of it, similar to, so our one-page notice gives maybe two sentences of what it is. I would like to include the applicant's material, even if we don't have a staff report, they can look at stuff. I believe in transparency. So a summary of what's the request, where it's located, if they get to the QR code, it's just a project kind of snippet for them. And then if they have specific questions, they can talk to staff.
Yeah, like, like, like in the question of the, of the porch, if you saw that, that actual plat, you'd have a lot more information to decide whether or not this concerned you, you know?
I think it'd be more information than we currently give with the mailer.
Well, without the person having to do, and without disrupting your day to answer their question, if they, if they call or if they come in and want to understand what's going on, it makes it more efficient.
Absolutely. What I've done in the past with my notice mailers and I haven't decided how I would change our noticing mailers is it would be a postcard because in my experience, I've seen people not really open mailers because they're like, that's from the city. Sometimes a postcard forces you kind of glance at it, right? And in those postcards, I would even put an aerial of the location of map so they can see how close is this to me in addition to a blurb of what it is. So I hear what you're saying. I have different ways to go about this. I would love to create a GS map of projects within the city to show where their status is. So when we receive one, I would love to project it so people know well in advance if they wanted to see what's going on, what's the status of it. Because I think in my experience, a lot of time people say, by the time I find out, it's too late or I don't have time. I have something planned, I can't show up. So I plan to do other things to supplement putting out the information early on, as well as this, creating a projects page to include supplemental documents or so people can better educate themselves.
That same thing could also have a QR code. So again, they get the, you know, so, so you, you wouldn't have to be very detailed, but if you put the QR code, they go find it, you know, and they, they see more information than, than is reasonable to put in a note to them or whatever.
Oh, absolutely. I, I hope to do that because it's, it is a burden to have to stuff a bunch of envelopes and a lot of that part of the notice is just the process, right? It tells you where do you go, when are the meetings, your testimony. I think when people receive these notice, they want to know what's happening in my neighborhood exactly, what is this? I want to be more focused on the petition itself. All the supplemental procedural things could be on our webpage, you know? Because if I only have three minutes of your attention, I want to make sure that I'm really taking advantage of that to ensure that you recognize what's occurring in your neighborhood. So I'm looking at all the stuff that, how we've been doing it and really simplifying it and not redoing a lot of work. And this is why this is very simple. And so I appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Yeah. Improving the civic process is, is wonderful.
There is one more section to amend that I would like to see amended within public So this one is, there's a code section that talks about displaying it at at least three public places. You know, I had to ask the question, where are these three public places? It's, I think it's important to be consistent, important that these public places are frequent by everyone, not just a certain group. You know, I saw one with the borough, I believe they use it at the post office, you know, here at City Hall. Not really sure where the other third public place is. So instead of making staff kind of figure this out, I think our public, our public engagement and communication policy already identifies areas where we're already displaying all this on our website, on our bulletin. And so this is a very outdated language and some cities would actually specify where are these three public places. I couldn't find this anywhere else in our code. So I want to go ahead or remove it and use that same language that we did in last year's amendment within the public hearing to say, given as required by law and in accordance with standard practice of providing public notice. Because that's doing a lot more than just posting in three random places, but I'm not really sure if that's capturing the intent of the code. So this, in my opinion, is a cleanup and making it consistent with last year's amendment as well. Any questions on this one? Suggestions, thoughts? So if these are all good with you, by next meeting, I will have a resolution to make, to amend the public hearing notice section. And then once your commission adopts the resolution, we'll forward that recommendation to city council for consideration. And that's all I have for this one then. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any comments or questions for staff on this item, especially that last section? All right. Well, great. Yeah, thank you for, for all this work and for the momentum and the positive changes. I think it's, it's great. There's, I don't think there's anybody still on Zoom, right? Nope. Okay. So no, no public comments. Informational items though, we have a update to our hazard mitigation plan, our 2024 hazard mitigation plan. Director Mitchell, could you please give an overview?
So I'm actually going to defer this to Jen to speak upon. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair, Congress passed 25 years ago about this act and it's called the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. And in that FEMA, which is Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA required tribal, local and state jurisdictions to coordinate mitigation planning and implementation mitigation efforts. And really what that means is hazard mitigation planning reduces the loss of life and property by minimizing risks and minimizing the impact of disasters. And with this act that Congress passed, it also requires for updates to FEMA every five years. And that maintains eligibility for certain grant funding requests. So the city intends to reduce, you know, and eliminate long-term risk of life and property by implementing an update. Our last hazard mitigation plan was in 2019, so Caitlin might remember and Jenny was here for it, but we're come due now because we're at five years. And so in order to comply with that, we need to have a pretty quick timeline. We have an, a survey, and so if you use this QR code, that's all the buzz in this meeting right now. This QR code will take you to an online survey and we are looking for as much public feedback about your perceived risk of public, or of hazards. We're also going to do an open house next Thursday at the library from 6:30 to eight. If you're, if you're interested, please come. If you know of anybody, please come. I don't know if this is quite the hot topic as some of our other public open houses. I am not sure what our engagement is going to be. So any engagement whatsoever from you guys is greatly appreciated. And at your next meeting on November 6th, we will have a draft for you. And when that, the packets typically published, the, you know, the Thursday or Wednesday before, so October 31st, Halloween, while you're giving out trick or treaters, feel free to open up your packet and breeze through another scary topic of hazard mitigation. And we're very open to comments and that can occur at any point in time prior to a council hearing on December 5th. So it'll be introduced to council on November 20th and the final hearing will be December 5th. So this is a pretty quick timeline, but we've, we've been able to kind of chunk out quite a bit right now and we have a game plan. And just because it's a tight timeline, we're not looking to rush through this because it is important to, to look at what hazards are, are here and what we need to do. And some of these hazards are floods, wildland fires, earthquakes, volcanoes, other weather events. And those are kind of the main ones for Soldatna. Also in your packet is a brochure and that is from the state. And so this one talks about assistance programs and this also really does highlight the need for us to do this update because, let me figure out where it says this. Well, in this, it, it talks about how in order to be eligible for, oh, for eligible for, for these, you have to have a current, a current plan. So, and if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
I'm just curious, and if you don't know this yet, that's fine. Do you anticipate any major updates from our previous hazard mitigation plan?
Well, yes. Our previous hazard mitigation plan didn't talk about climate change and there's quite a few around the state that do, whether it's embedded in another section like wildfires or whether it's its own section. But I would like to at least have that type of blurb that there are changing conditions on the central peninsula and what does that look like for some of our weather, drastic weather events. And then there's also been a lot of work since 2019 on wildland fire mitigation efforts. As you guys are well aware, the city has done an extensive work of clearing our own privately or publicly owned lands. And then outside of the city, the US Forest Service and US Fish and Wildlife have also put in some pretty large efforts. I mean, I'm sure you can remember the clearing of the Russian River campground and other places on, on the Sterling Highway as you're driving that have had some major fuel break issues.
Are there any questions or comments for Associate Planner Hester? Yeah, thanks. Look forward to it. All right, reports. Vice Mayor Parker, so nice to have you with us. Would you please give us a report?
Thank you, thank you, Chair Padla. Few things to report on. A year ago, the Supreme Court heard the city's appeal for annexation, say about overturning the decision from Superior Court Judge. And it took just over a year, but we finally got a decision from Supreme Court and the Supreme Court rejected the city's appeal. And so we will, at our meeting on Wednesday night, be discussing our next steps. As you know, this annexation issue has taken six, seven years that we've been working on it. You know, there was a lot of work beforehand and so it's been, it's been a long process. So we will decide, or at least we'll have discussion Wednesday night as to what is the next step. And it wasn't a decision that we were hoping for, but we can't change Supreme Court.
Commissioner Turner?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that was so disappointing to hear. When do you expect to hear from the Supreme Court as to what their reasons were?
We, we do have their opinion and unfortunately I haven't had the chance to read it. I have family visiting from out of town right now, so I haven't taken the time to sit down, sit down and read it yet, but we do have, and the director- But we do have, and the director can forward to the Planning Commission, the Supreme Court decision, if you guys are interested in reading it.
I am.
Okay. So next, there was an appeal to council sitting as a board of equalization on a conditional use permit that was issued for commercial property adjacent to the corner of Maggie Lake and the Sterling Highway. That appeal from the property owners was rejected by the council. And the property owner has gone forth and cleared the property, fenced it, put in gravel, and will be at some point here in the future renting it out for storage. So there was also at your recent meetings, couple of your meetings this summer, application to rezone just over 10 acres here in town from single family and a small portion that was commercial to commercial. We had, when it came before the council for consideration, we had 14 people who came to the meeting and testified. And after hearing from all the 14 individuals that were there, the council did not rezone the property to single family. And if you drive by it here now, there are for sale signs on the property. So we'll, we'll see, see what happens. And the last item I wanted to mention is, at our last council meeting, we had a report from our Public Works Director on the fieldhouse. And the fieldhouse is on schedule and on budget. And that's the end of my report unless there are any questions. The, almost the, the roof's almost completely on, siding's on, I think on three sides. It's not in the front. They will have it enclosed, and then the majority of the work will then revert to inside during the winter months. But on budget and on schedule.
And unusual. Any other questions for Vice Mayor Parker?
I noticed that there, we, maybe it was the state that put up a, one of those flashing things to say when you're going too fast on the, on the spur. You know, on the other side of, of the, but that was the state, it wouldn't be us.
That's correct. That's the state. And I have noticed that the contract for the Sterling Highway Safety Quarter finally got signed between Quap and the Department of Transportation and Dow, who is the engineers for the redesign. They had crews out working from 8 o'clock Saturday morning till, we saw them again at around 5:00 at Maggie Lake and Sterling Highway. So Dow is moving ahead, and there is supposed to be a public hearing on October 24th to get updates on the Sterling Highway Safety Corridor. But time and location are to be determined still.
And I think the, the point I would make is, didn't we have some conversation about coming down to Fred Myers? And, and the question, people going too fast, you know, there's the 40, the 55, the 45, and the 35. It might be nice to send a note to the state and say, gee, you could do it there as well. I don't know why they put it on the other one. The other one seems less of an issue. But they had to have a reason, I guess. But if they're going to deploy the thing, it would seem to me that would be the better place.
That, that's a DOT question.
Yeah, but can you have input?
DOT is not too responsive to local input.
May the record reflect. All right. The city manager's not here with us tonight, but Director Mitchell, would you have any additional comments? Leave us with the name?
Yeah, just a little bit, through your chair. I wanted to address one of the questions that Commissioner Burton had brought up in maybe two meetings ago about Cahill, and Vice Mayor just brought it up as well, in terms of their conditions, whether they're being met. We are looking into it. The, the condition was kind of, did not anticipate the impact when you clear property, right? When you say top of the ridge, and you clear that much, you really change the topography and grading, you know? I think it might be a lesson learned from us, is that one in the future, to be more clear on protective measures, construction fencing, and maybe not the edge of the top of the ridge, but maybe a further buffer to protect those naturally existing vegetation. So that is hard to require compliance because they did just clear at the top of the ridge because it was marked and staked. And due to the impact of it, it, it made it look different. We are looking at the impact of landscaping buffer between the residential and seeing if that criteria is met. So we are trying to stay on top of whether that property is compliant with the conditions written. So at least I wanted to give you an update on that. Just some things that we spoke on tonight and some things that, as I'm looking at our code to want to address as well. Commissioner Murray brought up a good point, accessory structures, size limitation. Because I'm, I'm starting to see trends of these larger buildings, accessory structures larger than the home. You know, you have to ask yourself what kind of neighborhood and community you want. Is there a desire for the principal structure to appear to be larger than the accessory? You know, do we want to look at capping the size of it or percentage of it, you know? Because things are going to start looking very different when you don't have that in place. And if someone came and said, I want a 3,000 square foot accessory building, you know, and not having to go through a discretionary across your commission, is, is that something you're going to be okay with? And if not, then we might want to start looking at our accessory use code section and revising it. I think it could be refined.
I agree. Anchorage has a maximum, and I don't, I forget what it is, but I think we need to look at it because they have a 2,000 square foot home, and they put a 3,000 accessory unit nearby. Just doesn't work for me.
Yeah, I remember on, on Marydale, someone had a small house and then built a, a large garage. And the neighborhood wasn't too happy about it, if I remember. It was a metal building, but within the code, I guess.
So we have accessory units and accessory dwelling units. Because there's, there's a, a size restriction with accessory dwelling units. And my question is, where, where is the line between those two? In terms of when somebody wants to put up an additional structure, how do we qualify it as an accessory dwelling unit or a mother-in-law unit? Or where is that line, or we say, you know, it applies here, so you have 800, whatever it is, square feet versus an unlimited, you know, amount?
Yeah, in fact, I mean, don't we have that now in the, in the code? We, we dealt with that about a year, year or so ago, that the primary residence, you couldn't, you couldn't replicate the size of the primary residence, you know, in a, in an accessory. What do we call it? Not a mother-in-law, we had a different.
Accessory dwelling.
Accessory dwelling. So I, I just wonder, in the particular case we just had, whether in fact, that language should have or could have applied. Don't know. It's a good question for our director and I.
So I appreciate these conversations and discussion because I had the same question. And I think with past interpretation of code, it's not clear because my first review of the variance was that I would have deemed it as an ADU. But I think we have permitted other accessory structures within mother-in-law and deemed it as an accessory structure, not an ADU. And so I think code needs to be clear in moving forward with a certain practice to be consistent. It was hard for me to come in and say, this is how I interpret it, but practices said otherwise. But that is a very good point, and I looked at it as well. Because if it was deemed as an ADU, absolutely, a variance would not have been granted or allowed to reduce the setback, and yes, size limitation as well. But in an ADU, does say that you can have, I believe, up to 700 square feet of the habitable, but it doesn't talk about how large the garage can be. So then that's a loophole. There's a loophole in our code, and I definitely want to bring it forth to address it. Because my concern here, my first question is, is it truly an accessory, accessory structure if it has a dwelling? Because if the home disappears, they're still compliant with their zoning. There's a dwelling unit, right? So then to me, I, I don't deem it as an accessory structure, even if we wanted to just focus on that aspect. Because if principal home disappears, there's technically a home on the premise. There is a residential dwelling, so that could stay as is. Usually if the principal structure goes away, the rest is out of compliance. So I'm thinking about these complexities because I have started to see on the peninsula, these larger buildings and a small portion of them, the mezzanine is a, a living unit. And is that the kind of structures we want to see allowed as a loophole? Because our current code says you can only have one principal structure unless you're in a zone that allows a second principal structure, or an ADU in our case, a smaller structure. So I had the same question as well.
Yeah, I mean, in 2800, I mean, it was characterized that it was so he could get his boat in. Well, if you look at the picture, the boat would fit in in 10-foot high. So, you know, you know, it indicated on the thing, it was that it's going to be a very large garage door, which would, would presume that most of the building would be garage, but, you know, that's a presumption.
Right. And our code of reasonable use is very subjective. I would love to refine how our variance is defined. Because reasonable use, your commission could have said, well, you could put a smaller boat, right? Just because everyone has a detached garage, the question is, what size is reasonable? That's, makes it hard for your commission to have that discussion.
But it could have, we could have put a requirement, it's too late now, we could have said, and the mother-in-law apartment cannot be more than 1,000 square feet.
Or 750.
Yeah. Is that what it is in the, in the, yeah. I mean, those are good questions in terms of the relationship kind of issue.
Absolutely. And I didn't want to scrutinize this one particular applicant as we're looking at code, you know, of putting them with conditions that we haven't done in the past to others. And so these are things, as I'm going through and seeing potentially where our code is not clear, to make it clear so that, you know, you have the code. Because I don't think conditions should be a tool to correct something that's lacking in our code.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I was just looking at the number seven, and, and there, there isn't necessarily clarity on whether the, and shall not be greater in area than the principal dwelling unit. The, the, you could interpret that to say, like, oh, the, the 750 square feet area of my mother-in-law above my garage is not bigger than my principal unit. But the whole unit, including the garage, could be bigger than the principal unit. And that, I don't know that, we just might, yeah, we might need to clean up several areas.
Absolutely. Usually, you know, the question is kind of chicken and egg, but like, what's the principal use? You know, in other cities, they say the space is greater than 50% is considered principal. In this case, when you have an accessory in a very small dwelling unit, or sorry, I'm just trying to use a, in the garage case, one way to make it cleaner is potentially saying, hey, the ADU can be up to 50% of the principal dwelling, but not to exceed 750. If you want to kind of keep that characteristic of the principal and accessory, there are certain ways to, to encompass that. Because, yeah, how, if it's a tiny home and now they want to build an ADU, does that mean it flip-flops? I don't know. You know, there's a lot of aspects that needs to be considered because we are starting to see more desires to build these smaller homes due to affordability. So now, you know, you build your principal home, your ADU is 750. I don't know. Do we want these small, tiny homes? You know, things to consider as we see trends, and that's hopefully my goal to tell you, what am I seeing through the permitting process?
Just a follow-up question as well, is that, you know, you, you have an acreage requirement for rural residential. And usually that, you know, you have a principal residence, but you don't have multiple buildings. You know, with, that are residences because of the limitation of the septic system that you put in, or the water slash septic. I wonder if that has any bearing on these kinds of questions.
Definitely, I'll be looking into that as well. I can't speak on behalf because I don't know where these lots are. But I definitely think it has bearings because we have to look at where our existing water and sewer lines are to really determine these lot sizes.
Because I think we actually have requirements, if it's multiple family or more than a duplex or whatever. And, you know, there's, there's more requirements in terms of access to public utilities. So just a thought.
No, absolutely. Thank you. And that's, and then I just want to speak briefly on the question of the rear yard, front yard on the variance. The reason, the rationale, well, it's not the rationale, our definition of a front yard is consider the property line that is adjacent to a platted right-of-way. In this case, the only platted right-of-way is boundary, which makes that the front yard. And then the rear yard is pretty much directly opposite the front yard. And it's sixes anyways because rear yard and front yard are 20 feet. So, you know, that is the rationale. I always go back to definition. Everyone has different interpretations of it, but I go back to our code and how it's defined. And then there's further about front lot lines as well. So I at least wanted to explain that part. I've looked at it and tried to figure out, is there another way to designate different side yards and so forth? And unfortunately, code doesn't give flexibly. Yeah. Yeah. So I want to just address that. Other than that, I don't have anything else and happy to answer any other questions your commission may have.
Yeah, just a follow-up. Thank you for the update on the, right by Maggie Lake, the, the, yeah, thank you. I, I, I remember there being language and, and maybe it wasn't clear enough, but of a, a buffer between the, on the Sterling Highway side. And I, I don't remember if it was a, what kind of a buffer, but I think it was a landscaping buffer, and the intent was to buffer it from traffic. And I remember that being in there and, and us putting it in there and the intent being to screen that use from the, the highway. Evergreen trees. Yeah. 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 And I think that, yeah, we should have been more clear. And I wonder, you know, I guess we should have said that the landscaping buffer is meant to screen as part of the buffer, or one of the reasons for having that buffer. And we require, how much is it? How much of a buffer do we require for screening purposes on commercial properties?
I think it's 15 for landscaping buffer. And then like for the one adjacent to, and then landscaping buffer says you should stagger it from center of 20 feet from the tree to 20 and stagger it to make it appear like they're only 10 feet away from each other.
Right.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, I would, I would say that they're not meeting the intent of our landscaping code. And I wish there was something that we could do about it, and maybe there is, you know, if we could require them to meet our landscaping code and say, hey, this is the reason we have our buffer there. It's a visual screen, and you're not meeting it now, and this is what you have to do to meet it. I don't know if we can do that, but I wish, no, I mean, just, yeah, plant it right in the gravel there. Yeah, they'd probably have to bring in some dirt. But, you know, other people do that. We, we make other people plant all sorts of trees. So, I mean, and they're a commercial property, I think they should have to follow the same rules that other people do. And, and I know that this property was a little bit different, but, you know, the, the trees down the slope, they're not buffering anything.
We can talk about it, but in here, you can just look at what she's highlighted, minimum 15 feet and with along property lines. You know, these landscaping buffers, our code doesn't account for topography changes. So that's where condition would be more clear, just would have said, hey, landscaping buffer at the top. What, while you cannot clear right below the top of the slope, but you must provide landscaping buffer to ensure adequate screening from the highway, at least 15 feet from the top of the slope, something along those line is effective tool in condition for staff to enforce. I, I'm not sure the way it's written that we have much to say, come in and say, you need to provide because it's not very clear.
Yeah, does not detract from the visual character of the community. I mean, you could argue that, um, our landscaping code is put in place to ensure the visual character of the community remains. Um, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to consult with our attorney.
But, but we don't say you have to have 25 foot high trees. We say you have to have 15 foot of vegetation, you know? So, I mean, you can get into semantics. You know, I mean, it still meets, I agree, the director, still meets the, 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 the regulation as written without having placed a condition on him, which we could have done, but.
Yeah, I think we, I mean, I think we thought we did put that condition on there. That's why we belabored it so much. But yeah, I guess we didn't get it exactly right. But I would argue that the intent was to, was to have a visual buffer. And shrubberies would be something, you know?
No, I, I understand where you're getting at and I'm happy to see if there's any way. I don't foresee it for this particular one. Moving forward with conditions, I'm not going to be inclined to repeat what code says. I want to just include conditions that are specific for the property. The reason for that is when you regurgitate some things are in code and you, code and you amend it, then do you hold that particular CUP to an old code? Because you condition it specifically for the project. And mostly it gives us more freedom to refer back to the code itself. If it's just general standard that applies to everyone here, I think conditions are too lengthy and some of it's just repetitive. Like we all know a sign permit, if you need it, you put up a sign and it's requires a sign permit, you need a sign permit. You don't have to tell them that. Um, so you're going to see some changes in the conditions and more refined conditions to say prior to construction, after construction. To be very clear on the expectation of timing as well as being clear, you know, evergreen trees. Are we just talking about a certain corridor along what frontage, you know? It makes it difficult to really apply code enforcement when it's so generic and it's not specific. Um, so those are kind of some of the changes you'll see from staff moving forward. Um, but I will do my best to see what we can do with the applicant and all this property because I recognize the dramatic effect of the clearing it has on, on the city when you drive through now.
Thank you. All right, um, are there any other questions for, uh, Director Mitchell? Moving on, um, Associate Planner Hester, do you have anything additional to report?
No comment.
Thanks. Um, Commissioner comments? Gary, you want to start? No comment. All right, Commissioner Murray?
Um, have we heard from John at all?
Is he still alive? Living it up?
I have not heard from John, but I need to also forward him the Supreme Court decision. I know he really wanted to keep up to date what's going on with the annexation, so I'll reach out to him.
Commissioner Burton?
Uh, thank you. Uh, this was well organized and, uh, appreciate, uh, staff. You guys do a great job.
Uh, Commissioner Tapfest?
Um, just appreciate everybody. Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thanks so much for the, um, the clarity with tonight's meeting. It was, and made our decisions, I think, easier. And, uh, yes, great. Great to see, see the things that are happening. Um, we'll see everybody on the sixth. That is my dad's birthday, Papa Bruce. So we'll just keep him in our thoughts. Um, and with that, um, this meeting is adjourned.